Good evening, I have seven o'clock. Good evening, I have seven o'clock. I'm calling immediate order and ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you Mayor, Mr. Greg David.
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean. Appears absent. And Ms. Emily Hamburg.
Here.
Mr. Tom Schmitz.
Present.
And Mr. John Welch.
Present.
And you have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. This evening we have Father LeBenz lead us in prayer. Father LeBenz.
Thank you Mayor. Tonight I'm gonna pray Psalm forty-seven. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen. Clap your hands all peoples, shout to God with loud songs of joy. For the Lord the Most High is awesome, the great King over all the earth. He subdued peoples under his and nations under our feet. He chose our heritage for us, the pride of Jacob whom he loves. God has gone up with shout, the Lord with the sound of a trumpet. Sing praise to God, sing praise. Sing praise to our King, sing praise. For God is the King of all the earth, sing praises with a psalm. God reigns over the nations, God sits on his holy throne. The princes of the peoples gather as the people of the God of Abraham. For the shields of the earth belong to God, he is highly exalted. Glory be to the Father and to the Son and to the Holy Spirit. As it was in the beginning, is down ever shall be, world without end, amen. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you. This evening, please join me with the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions, to reply from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excited when the agenda is determined, agenda additions? Do we have any issues we need to add to the agenda? Hearing none, and move on to consent agenda. So the consent agenda consists of the minutes of the August fifth city council meeting.
A motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. David. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Next item is discussion approval of the appropriations ordinance. I'm finding with our audio system, I don't know what it is. This appropriation ordinance encompasses expenses from the July thirtieth to August twelfth. Expenditures amounted to seven hundred, one thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. Of the reported expenses, two hundred and four thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars are infrastructure costs for new developments. And these costs are paid through special assessments.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance number two-five-one-five.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. David, a second by Mr. Schmidt. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries four to zero. City requested appearances, so this evening we have Mr. Jesse Miller to give us an update regarding the steering committee for the Seton County Fire District One. Mr. Miller.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to see you guys. Thank you for having me. So I'm gonna provide just a very high level kind of overview of the things that we've been experiencing, just as a member of the steering committee. We've recently had Fire Board Chairman Ryan Beatty and various members of Wichita's, council members and city officials and things of that nature. One of the bigger topics of discussion has been a shared training center with Wichita Fire Department. I don't have too much in the weeds or kind of specifics on how that is going to work. It is just an ongoing discussion at this point, I'm sure you all are kind of up to speed on what's going on there. More than happy to provide a more in-depth kind of analysis of what that would look like at a later date, if not by the end of the week, just out of respect for time. One of the other kind of topics of discussion that we've recently had is a new Quint thirty-five that has been, or is going to be delivered from Chicago. Another thing that we've been going over is a academy training officer still in the works on that can kind of get into how they are staffing that. Makes more sense to have someone who is a year-round employee to train the staff. I know the last time that I was here, I was kind of leaving it up for discussion on your side of the table. If you had questions or concerns, just let me know what you need. What we have agreed to is really have more of a streamlined process from the individuals that are actually on the fire board, directly to us in the steering committee, so that we are quarterly updating them as well as myself getting in front of you guys as the city council to let you know exactly what we're doing. Because the, you know, the district is growing. So it's gonna be really interesting to see just kind of where we end up, you know, here pretty quickly. Bringing new cities in, cities growing, just different mutual aid agreements, things of that nature. I don't want to ramble too much. It's a very exciting thing being on the steering council, so I can let you know. I did want to bring this up and also on the record, the pride and dedication that they show, just as firemen, is second to none. And I know that I've spoken with you just kind of in private, but it is really amazing to see just kind of the work that they do. And the various training that they go through, whether that's in, I think it was Wisconsin, Tennessee, hazmat, scuba diving, master diver certification, just different things that they're doing to make sure that we're all safe. It is truly amazing, you think of fire, you're really just kind of thinking of fire in your homes. There's so much more that goes into what exactly they do and what they're capable of doing in an emergency situation. Our weather is ridiculous, it's raining today, right? Sure you're gonna go over the roads and all the fun stuff and someone's probably gonna say something about that. But just what they can do in a flood is, I don't want to overuse the word amazing, but it's very interesting. It's a blessing to know that they are ready and willing to put their lives on the line for us. So, let me know what you got and I'll get out of your hair and.
So I think, I think last time you were here, there was a discussion about the black line. There's this line where Wichita and mutual aid does not go across on mutual aid. I don't know where that is today, I know they keep moving it out further and further, but did you get any input on information about that?
I can get back with chief and then I can update you as early as tomorrow.
Okay, well I think there's some interest in knowing where that is, because I know once they hit that point, they usually don't cross it on mutual aid, so.
There's other cities that they've been focused on with that mutual aid, with other cities, let's say not paying to be in the fire district and they're having to respond to those. We get the emails of different things that they're responding to, I think it's like a hundred and six, I don't want to off quote the number just being on the record, but it is interesting with that. So just on the Wichita, I can get you that specific number.
I know that the local station gets a lot of calls into Wichita because it's the closest station to a lot of Wichita homes.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And as we expand out and more cities grow and move around, you're kind of wanting the fire, you know, station to be, so there's this whole conversation with that.
Yeah, very good, thank you.
It's interesting with that as well.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have, I think it'd be great if you guys are gonna combine somehow the training and the activities with Wichita. I mean, you may have access to better facilities that, you know, that Wichita may be able to have that maybe at the county level, they wouldn't have it, whether it's a tall tower or other features, that would be great. So yeah, I don't know if it would change the training any, or maybe just make it more robust, which I think would be great. So I'm looking forward to that kind of a partnership, because then we'd also have, maybe as they train together, maybe this, make it more seamless if they have to work together because it's a larger fire or whatever the activity is. I just think anytime you have a little bit more seamless or people are used to working together, it just makes it that more efficient and better for all the citizens.
Absolutely. I'll springboard off the last thing that you said, because that is a shared sentiment across the board, is the safety and also the consistency. So you can have, that's the other part, just kind of going over, having a year-round training officer just for the Seton County Fire District. Because you'll have one individual that's taken off of their shift and let's say it's, for example, it's you. We get to February and it's Ted, right? The way that you may respond, hold people accountable, not saying that it may be less or more than what Ted may be able to do, but things can be different. So just consistency around the board, if you were to share, right, then everyone is kind of going through that same.
Right, they're on the same page.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, ongoing conversation with that, I mean, there's a lot of kind of behind the scenes with, you know, the ownership, the location, the space, what's available zoning, just a lot of just different things that we get into. But the main things to kind of keep top of mind is that consistency, making sure citizens are safe and that it's the same for everyone, because once you do that, you're still trying to respond to what is, to what we are responsible for right now. And not just say metro Wichita and all the major cities or surrounding suburbs.
Okay. I have one more question that I'll ask you. So, do the firemen use GPS to find a location that's been called in? Or are they required to find the event without GPS because they want them to know the street? So I'm just trying to figure out, do they use GPS or do they use a combination of GPS and their own knowledge of where any event is?
I don't want to offhand speak about their technology, I can get that answer for you.
Yeah, I'm just curious how they do that.
Jesse's answer would be that they are certainly using GPS and various types of, you know, technology to get there, respond fast and know exactly where they are going. It does kind of, the word you wanted to use is behoove them to know the neighborhood that they're serving. So I'm sure that that kind of plays a part as well to know.
Because I know in the past, they had to memorize all the streets, memorize all the routes. And then when things happen, like a road is shut down, like right now, we have Oliver shut down. And I'm just wondering if GPS would, you know, potentially, because it will route you around that. But if you're using your memory, then, oh, that's right, that's shut down. I'm just curious on how they do that. I just wanted to find out, I mean, I'd hope they use GPS and back it up with the knowledge of where you'd go without it. But I'd sure hate they wouldn't go the other route and say, well, you have to know where it's at. And if last resort, you use GPS, I'd rather go the other way, because it's safer for citizens, I think, if they have a more controlled event, you know, how to get there. But you do have to plan for what happens if the tower goes down, I get it. Anyway, I'll be just curious.
No, that's, that's, those are the kind of questions that I'm looking to bring, to bring back, so I can have that for you tomorrow. That does make sense, because clearly we all know where we are.
Sure.
So, I get your point. Yes, sir.
Very good.
Any others, give me something good. That was a great question.
Any other questions for Jesse? Well, thank you, sir, I appreciate your help with this.
I appreciate you, also, well, I'll tell you, but I'm entering the busiest season with Medicare, so the open enrollment.
I can't understand why.
That's right, right.
There's only fifty million people.
I know, right? We'll talk about that later, but thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Tara Loughlin with Allen Gips and Hulick. She is here to give a presentation about the city's annual audit. She just completed the twenty-twenty-four audit and she's gonna tell us how good we're doing.
Yes. Good evening, I'm Tara Loughlin, I'm a senior vice president with AGH and I specialize in our government practice, both consulting and audit. As mentioned, I'm here tonight to present the results of the fiscal year twenty-four financial statement audit. I first off want to thank Barry, Ted, all the team that works with us during the audit process. We're bugging them all week while they're trying to get their normal work done. They're all very open and very helpful to us during that process. Scope of the audit is we do the financial statement audit, so issue an opinion on the financial statements, which presents the financial activity for the city for the fiscal year. This year you will notice, for those of you who have been on the council before, an additional report, which relates to the ARPA funding being spent and that all kind of getting closed down. At the federal level, they allowed governments who did expend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal expenditures in a year, which usually would require a full-blown single audit. If you only exceeded that threshold because you used your ARPA money, they let us do a more limited scope service called an examination. So you will see that report and I'll go over it after I talk about the financial statements. But that is an additional scope of service we did do this year as required by the city spending their ARPA money. Next year, we likely will have to do a single audit with your larger grant program. But for this year, we were able to do this kind of limited scope service. We did issue an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements, which means the financial statements materially reflect the books and records of the city for the fiscal year. And we also had no findings on that examination report, so overall a very clean audit. I'm gonna start really by going in detail of the governance letter, which is our required communications we must have with those charged with governance. I'm gonna highlight the things that are really specific to this year and not just kind of an annual information. At the bottom of the very first page, it talks about any new accounting standards that are reflected within the financial statements. This year, the city did have to adopt two statements. One is just kind of a general statement on how to deal with certain situations. It did impact the other statement that was effective, which was GASB statement number one-oh-one, reporting on compensated absences. So the Government Accounting Standards Board is who oversees the accounting rules and how people have to present information. This standard one-oh-one changed how we calculate sick and vacation, that's been, that employees have accrued that they haven't used yet. In the past, we really would only pick up what was potentially going to be paid out when that employee left employment and was owed it per policy. This new standard tacked on top of that, estimating how much employees will use while they're still working with the city. So I did put the amounts there of what we had to kind of restate the beginning balances to reflect the standard as required by the standard. They're not overly significant to the city, as you can see, the amount's twelve thousand, hundred thousand. But again, that's just an accrual, it's not necessarily cash payments out, so nothing will change on how individuals actually use their sick and vacation time, but I did want to point that change out. Other than that, there is no significant changes in accounting policy, so if you see changes within the financials, if you're looking at last year's and this year's, it's due to changes in operations. Towards the top of the second is just kind of tacking on to that statement change. With the change, we do add a little sentence in the opinion, just alerting readers that there was a new standard that was effective, but it doesn't impact our opinion. Middle of the second page, we do have to discuss significant accounting estimates, there is no changes to these. So for those of you who have been on the council before, our responsibility as it relates to significant estimates is to get an understanding of how those are being done. Are the estimates being done in line with accounting procedures, is the data being used accurate, calculations correct? In all cases, we found that the estimates were being done reasonably. Your two biggest estimates really are your net pension liability and your other post-employment liability. The net pension liability, of course, being your share of the caper's pension plan liability. At the bottom of the second page and onto the third page, we do list out the audit adjustments that were performed during the audit. As in prior years, the city keeps their books and records on a day-to-day operations basis to be in line with budget and cash law of the state, not necessarily generally accepted accounting principles. So during the audit process, we had to convert that information to be in line with generally accounting principles. And all the adjustments listed are the same type of adjustments we do every year to do that conversion. So no significant change in that process for all of you who have been on this council before, no significant new adjustments. Again, it's really just doing that conversion process. We have talked with Barry and they're gonna look at taking, start taking over pieces of that, but it's just a lot of work to do with a limited staff. But over the next couple of years, I think we'll be pushing some of that and/or the city will keep looking into being able to elect to do the Kansas Municipal Audit Guide Financial Statements, which is more budget-based. On page three, I always like to point out in the middle of the page, observations about the audit process. This generally, like I started, we had no disagreements with management, everybody was really open, willing to work with us, get us support timely, to help make the audit efficient. We did work through the new system, new accounting system this year, so there was just some hiccups of getting information that we needed, but we were able to work through that. And the staff worked with us really well, just trying to figure out how things changed with the new system, but again, we were able to work through that. The bottom of page three onto page four, just talks about our independence, that we are independent of management. And it just, I like to point that out because it outlines those rules of both what's our responsibilities as an audit firm and then versus what the city is responsible for as it relates to independence, which generally speaking is letting us know if something's going on that would make us not independent, but we are independent of the city. Bottom of page four, onto page five and six, again, the internal control matter that we noticed material weakness is related to the gap conversion. So it's the same idea that it has been in prior years, it's just since those are material audit adjustments, we are required to report that. But no significant changes in that, other than we are, now that the new system's in place, going to be working with the city and identify, you know, which entries can get pushed back to the city management efficiently to help address that item, but really no change in that from the prior year. The next item noted is related to municipal court receivable revenue segregation of duties. This is listed as a significant deficiency, which is the middle-of-the-road deficiency. However, since the end of fiscal year twenty-four, the city has put compensating controls in place to be able to track if any violations are changed or voided and have a third-party person within the city review to make sure those were legitimate changes. It just wasn't in effect for fiscal year twenty-four. So we will re-review that next year during the audit, make sure those controls are in place and it should address this issue. So it's already really been worked through, it's just timing of reporting. Then on page six are really items that have been reported in prior years that are the lowest level of concern as far as control deficiencies go. And it's really related to your small organization environment and segregation of duties issues. I just like to report this because in these cases, there are compensating controls in place and were in place during fiscal year twenty-four. But I like to present that and let you know what those compensating controls are. It's always good to remind management what those compensating controls are as well, that way if people turn over, those controls stay in place, so they don't become a more significant issue in the future. But again, no new ones there, the last bullet point is new, related to electronic payments policy. And all this is, is the city does have controls over wire payments, for example, proper controls, it's just not formally documented, like in a policy or procedure. So we recommend that what they're doing, which is good, gets put in writing. So I just wanted to highlight that it's not a concern that the controls aren't there, it's just not in writing to kind of have, have, for information for everyone involved in that process. On page seven, just starts kind of some general matters that we actually present to all of our client base, no matter what industry they're in. So it's just highlighting kind of what those concerns are that are out there, just in the general environment. The biggest one obviously being cybersecurity and electronic payment. So it's just an update on that information more, so the governing body, you know, can ask questions of management, make sure you're comfortable with what the city's doing to protect themselves in those areas. Before I quickly talk about the compliance examination report, any questions on the financial statement audit? I will point out, the financial statements are rather lengthy. Pages three to ten is a good spot to start, that's the management discussion and analysis and it gives a nice summary of what's in the financials. And then if something piques your interest, you can find the more details within the financial statements. The second letter, again, that is new for this year, is labeled "Report on Compliance." Again, this is related specifically to the use of the city ARPA funding spending during the year. The OMB came out with guidelines to do an examination instead of a full-blown single audit. So this is just the result of that, which is clean, so there's no findings here to report. So we found the ARPA money was spent as required by the ARPA guidance, so no issues noted there. And again, we'll probably be doing a more in-depth single audit next year, just because of some of the grant activity going on in fiscal year twenty-five. So with that, any other questions for me?
I thought it was a good review, looking through it and, yeah, you made some good points. So yeah, I think, and hopefully we can help, I don't know if our system will support that, but have a gap report to prevent the conversion in the future. And maybe it'll just pop that out, you know, because I know that's always the way a lot of businesses run, their business is different, and maybe. and maybe a city, than what GAAP is asking for. So you always have to do that transition. But with the electronic system, maybe we'd have some options to make it a little easier next time. But thank you for your review.
Thank you. So any other questions or comments? I appreciate the information and the, we'll review the very insignificant findings with staff to make sure we can do about those. But obviously, if we need a procedure, that's an easy, that's low-hanging fruit type of thing. But we'll look at them all, check, talk with Ted and Barry and see what we can do. So I appreciate the information and it's always good to have a pretty clean update. So thank you. Next item on agenda is the public hearing regarding special assessments. So this issue, in 2022, several developers petitioned the city for improvements, such as water distribution, sanitation, sewer, paving, et cetera. And a full list of improvements is included in the packet. As a result, the cost of said improvements are now to be special assessed against the benefiting properties. All properties being assessed have been notified, and a public hearing allows property owners the ability to ask questions or comments. And I will open the public hearing after, and after all individuals present, have been given the opportunity to speak on the matter. Council will close the hearing with a motion and vote. So just a note, and I do have four cards from citizens that have asked to speak at this, during this hearing. I just want to clarify one thing because it's always seems to be an issue from year to year. Please only speak of the council if you believe an error has been made. The fact that the petitions of property owners at the time of petition is a matter of public record. And the cost estimates were provided at that time. The numbers are set by those estimates, and the actual costs incurred are actually lower than the estimates that they had back in 2022. So that's kind of a good news for everybody, but there's still special assessments. So the first person that I have a card for is Deanna Arrington, representing Cleo Fidate. If I'm reading it right, I'm not sure I'm reading it correctly, the way it's written. But anyway, please state your name and address for the record and then your comments.
I'm Diana Arrington. The address is 5349 Pinecrest Court North, Bel Air. And my mother is actually the homeowner, and she owns both 5349 and 5347, which are obviously one unit together. And we did receive the notification, statement of cost proposed to be assessed that was dated August 7th. And we're rather shocked, to say the least. We did purchase these homes just about a year ago. Purchased the one in July and then closed on the second property in August. The information we were given at that time at closing was that assessments would be approximately $25,000 per property. So we purchased with that knowledge in mind. When we received this information the other day, the actual total amount was $29,975.94, which is approximately 21.25% more than what we were told a year ago. That's a pretty significant increase year over year. As we were kind of having just an informal discussion before this meeting started, we've never, ever purchased homes in all the states we've lived in where assessments come due after a home has been purchased and occupied. So this was certainly a concern at the time. But we did set aside what we were told was sufficient funds to pay for this. And the actual total was to be paid, according to the letter, within 15 days of the date of this letter. So just by raise of hands, if anyone has ever been given a bill a year after they've purchased a home that was due in 15 days for $59,951.88 or more on a personal property, I'd really like to see your hands. I didn't think so. I've been a Realtor in Virginia and in California, Northern California, I emphasize. That's the part we claim. And we left California because of what we saw beginning to happen with billions of dollars of debt. And the only place really to go after anyone were the homeowners. And we lived during those horrible days of the '70s, pre-Prop 13, and now they're talking about rescinding that, where taxes were going up exponentially year after year. As a Realtor, I've considered getting my license again here in Kansas. But I can tell you that these kind of bills really chill my determination to do that. I would never want a client to receive this kind of bill a year after purchasing a home. In fact, I really think it's almost criminal. I do not believe, and I think it's important, that the work that was done in this neighborhood in particular, now that we've lived there through four seasons, we have seen how these roads, sewer system, et cetera, has held up to the weather. And there are some definite improvements needed. And we found that especially during the winter months.
Ms. Arrington, I apologize. I should have told you, we do limit our comments to three minutes. And that time has expired. I'll let you do a quick wrap-up, if you would.
I think I pretty much got to the point. And I'm very concerned about the neighborhood becoming a place where it's just for investors and we don't see homeownership. And Bel Air has gotten a bad reputation for having multifamilies, subdivisions that are primarily rental and the neighborhoods are not safe and they're not quality. So I really would like to see the council address that.
Well, thank you for your comments. So just a couple of reflections there, just real quick. We do realize this area is kind of unique with the special taxes. Other areas, you buy the property at a much higher price and the developer absorbs that cost. And in this part of the country, just this part of Kansas, actually, you can buy the property at a lower price, but you end up having to pay special assessments for the infrastructure cost. I can't answer or talk to why you've got a disparity between a year ago and now. Those numbers probably were known a year ago. And whether you got that information, I can't speak to that. I just don't know. But thank you for your comments. Next, I have Mr. Bob Jansen. And again, three minutes. And if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you for having me. Bob Jansen currently lives at 5110 North Remington. And my wife and I are building a new home at 5547 North Tobin Court in the new Cedar Pass area. And we received the assessment for the specials for Phase 1, Block B, Lot 34. And it was a little bit alarming. What I would like to know, how many, can you tell me how many lots are actually sharing that cost? Number two, is this going to be, is this spread out over all the phases or just Phase 1? And then, and then how many properties are they going to entail? And will the north development? I bought this lot from Gene Vittarelli, and I understand that Mr. Basham owns the north part of it. And my biggest concern is what the fine lady just mentioned is, is are they going to be multifamily? I was told this could be single-family. My wife and I just built it. And if it's going to be multifamily, then I picked the wrong place. We chose to stay in Bel Air rather than go into Wichita with lower property taxes. And then we get this assessment. And I understand a lot of this. But yeah, we are quite concerned. And if that northern piece is not going to be a part of this assessment, are they going to be able to use this main road to go in there and basically use that for a point of entrance and back and forth? Because then if it is going to be multifamily, we'll live there two years, so I don't have to pay capital gains and I'm selling. And that's the way it is.
I'm sorry, I don't know that. I'm in a position to answer your questions. And do we have somebody that can answer those questions?
You're talking Cedar Pass, north of 53rd.
Yes.
Yeah, that's all single-family as well as Bel Air Lakes.
In the north part?
Bel Air Lakes is as well.
Okay, all right, very good.
And Barry Smith, the fine instructor, probably answer every other question.
And will all phases share this special tax assessment?
Correct. Every benefit, Barry Smith can probably answer all your questions. But the way it works is the petition, everybody that benefits shares an equal portion of that benefit. So it depends on what phase you're in and when it was bid. I imagine it's Phase 1. So everyone inside of Phase 1 would be assessed the same amount.
Okay. The question is, is when Phase 2, 3, 4, are they going to share that as well? Because there's going to be another entrance off the web? Are that going to be the main entrance and the back and forth?
So.
Because, is everybody going to share it?
Yes, anybody that benefits from a public improvement will share in that public improvement. I don't know the exact ends and outs that you're discussing without a plat in front of me.
Well, I can come back.
Yeah, yeah, all these questions we can answer.
Let me suggest that you meet with the city manager and the city.
Yes, I can do that, Ted.
And I'm sure they can get those questions answered for you.
And the tax payment is going to be for 20 years? And at what interest rate?
So that's where, after this process, we'll go sell the bonds and then that will set the interest rate. And that's a little bit of miscommunication with the first. So when all this is dictated by state statute, meaning we have to send this letter the exact way it's worded, the 15 days is just a prepayment period. You don't have to pay it in the first 15 days. That just allows you to pay it before we go out and sell a bond. Once we sell that bond, it'll be a 20-year payment structure.
And then that the interest rate will be added on to that.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
How do you know about it? What interest rate you think we would?
Yeah, so it's 20-year payment structure. And so each year on your property tax bill, it'll be relatively flat. We're trying to do it best we can. As far as the interest rate, we do this because it changes every day. Let me see if I can pull up the last number we ran.
And the city, the city is, has got skin in the game as well as a developer, correct? On the cost of all this?
No, this would be the developer petition to city to put in these improvements, correct?
All right.
Somewhere around 4.5%?
That's not bad nowadays.
Yeah, that may be a little bit uncertain. Hopefully, we'll have a good response.
And so if you decided to pay that upfront, you pay what's on the paper. All right, otherwise, it'd be spread out, okay?
Yeah, yeah. Once we sell the bonds, at that point, we know the total interest rate and everything like that. And then we have until.
240 months and it goes on your.
No, it's just a yearly payment. So it shows up on your property tax bill. You get it annually. So it'll just be one payment that you make. It'll appear on your property.
Okay, along with your property taxes.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's set, because property taxes, ours just went up again.
The specials are set. Specials, once the bond's sold, the specials are set.
Once we do the tax rolls after the bonds are sold and we set the tax rolls, those are set for the 20 years. Those won't change at all. So it's a fixed amount. And it's that principal amount that shows up on that letter plus whatever the interest will be. And like I said, relatively level, we do it best we can. It's hard when you're providing enough. I was looking at secret taxes, a lot of properties that were sharing across, those kind of part of you.
So I want to kind of, we ran over time here, so I want to move on.
Can I have one more question?
Real quick.
Okay. Gene Vittarelli said he gave a lot to the city for a common area. And if that is so, when can we expect to have, kind of like what's going over at Chris Court, you know, basketball court, pickleball court, whatever? Is that something that?
We've been in early talks on the Cedar Pass lot. I haven't had anything official from Gene yet, but I can reach back out to him.
Now, you said he gave it a lot to you folks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, please visit with Ted and Barry.
I'll come back and visit with you, Ted.
About your detailed questions. All right, thank you.
The other little part, Mayor Benajah, I'd like to say is all these costs stay with the lot and the property. Meaning if you were to sell, that would stay with the property and you'd sell it if you let it go.
Okay, thank you. Next we have on the agenda is, or next card I have is Julie Moore.
Good evening. I'm Julie Moore at 5326 North Pinecrest Street. And I did not receive a letter. And I'm trying to find out, is that a mistake? Based on the previous resident that spoke, sounded like it's for all the properties. And Chapel Landing, not everyone received a letter. And I was notified via our Facebook page and wanting to know, why not? Do you guys know?
I could speculate.
Am I just lucky?
You may be lucky, but it may not be such good news. I can speculate, but I will ask staff to please look into that and find out for certain. But my speculation is that you're probably not paying specials right now. And my speculation is that your part of the development is a later bond that will probably come up next year.
I thought before he did, and he received his. He's after me, speaking. He's my next-door neighbor, so we're housemates.
But I would ask staff to please research that and make sure that there wasn't a mistake.
Because it seems like majority of our residents have not received letters.
Okay, so we just need to find out. And I'll ask staff to please research that and get back to you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Mr. William Kelly. And he's the neighbor.
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, council, mayor, everybody else. I am her neighbor. I live at 5328 North Pinecrest. My name is William Kelly. I did receive a letter. I was one of the very few. My wife and I run the Facebook page for Chapel Landing, kind of. And we did a little rough math. It's a little bit less now that I had somebody who actually did math come in. So the rough estimate for the 80 residences, because there are 40 buildings, they're each split between two separate halves. So for the entire residence of Chapel Landing, it's $2.4 million for a road that is less than a tenth of a mile long and has some drainage issues. Now, I did recognize that we have 53rd Street running by. And I'm assuming the people next to us who are at the residence of the small retirement community who are also assessed would tack on another $600,000 to that. So just in our small, little two streets that are maybe a third of a mile combined, you're pulling in $3 million. And then you have 53rd Street all the way to Woodlawn and all of those homes. So my best guess, Desmond, is somewhere around $10 to $14 million that you're going to pull in. I've looked at 53rd Street. It is a snow route, I get that. I've looked at our road. I'm not really sure how I get that. So I'm trying to figure out, based on your assessment, that that's worth roughly $14 million worth stretcher road plus the private entrances into the homes. And I'm just trying to figure out the math, because math isn't math. I spent 20 years in the military, got blown up a lot. So my brain's not the best. So if you can explain it, I'd appreciate it.
I can't answer the details because I don't know them. But again, we can ask you to visit with staff separately to get the answer to those details. But keep in mind that those special assessments are not just the road itself. It's the storm water, storm sewer system, it's the wastewater. It's the wastewater system, sewer system. And it is the freshwater, the potable water system, uh, that, that all enter into that calculation. So, uh, and then it's all the plotting and for the development and.
Well, the reason I bring up the whole military thing is because I got my home from the VA.
Yeah.
And they specifically told me, don't worry, this is your final brass tax. This is how much you're going to pay. 250 flat, you're out the door. Cause the VA is covering it.
Okay.
And then I get a, oh no, but you owe another 30 grand.
Yeah.
So I'm a little bit, you know, confused by that because I was told one thing by the federal government, until another thing by the city that I live in. So those two things aren't matching.
All I can say is this is all a matter of public record. It was out there. It's always been out there for the last three years. Uh, so if somebody missed it, I, I can't speak to that. I don't know about that. Uh, but this is not new information in that respect. Uh, but I do know sometimes people do overlook those things. And that's really sad that they do it because you as property buyer do have a right to know, what are those costs? You know, I, I get it. You, you have a right to know that and they should be telling you that stuff.
No, I, I understand. It's just, I, I had an opportunity to have a loan that was higher. That would have covered the expenses, but I didn't know about it and so didn't do it.
Yeah.
And so I feel like it's kind of s- someone somewhere should be communicating to realtors who are operating within your city that these things exist within the properties.
Yeah. They're well aware of it. It's, it's the whole area. It's not just with Bel Air, it's Wichita. It's almost every community around here does it.
So I'm not putting that on you.
But yeah, okay. Uh, but anyway, I thank you for your time and information. Uh, please visit separately with the staff. Give Ted a call tomorrow or something and set up a time to, to go over all the details that you're looking.
Okay. Gee, your time.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any other citizens that, that are, want to talk about the special assessments? And if there are none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
One second.
A motion by Ms. Hamburg, a second by Mr. Welsh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries forward in zero. The next item on the agenda is citizens' concerns. And this is anything that citizens wish to speak about, not related to special assessments, if there are any. Um, and if there are none, yeah. Oh, you have a card. Okay. Mr. Roffey. Yeah. Just for the record, state your name and address and.
Hi, my name is Bruce Repke. I live at 4300 North Rushwood Circle. Starting September 1st, I'm going to be taking part again in the Great Cycle Challenge. It's a fundraiser to fight kids' cancer. This is the 11th year. Since 2015, they've raised about $72 million. And it's been raised by people riding over 33 million miles. We're always looking for more people to ride. We're always looking for more people to sponsor. So if anyone would like to join in, please help us out.
How long's your ride?
I'm shooting for 140 miles this year.
Great. Okay. Well, thank you for, for the information. Appreciate it. All right. There are no other citizen concerns. Um, Ted, I see that, uh, our attorneys are here. Do we want to, do we want to, uh, jump to executive session and get that over with? Or you want to?
If we want to get our reports out of the way, maybe.
Okay.
Or, and then, and then we can jump to it.
Okay. Very good.
So I don't, I don't think anybody else is here, so you're okay.
Okay. So, um, council member reports, uh, I'll start with Mr. Davis.
Mr. Mayor, no report. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Schmidt. Oh, sorry. Um, I, I noted a few weeks ago, there was some issues with Culver's next to Woodlawn and the city staff took care of those. And it was great to see. I mean, they were out there and took care of it. And I was, I'm glad it was done before school started because it's a nightmare with all the cars moving around. So thank you very much to the city and thanks for a great job. And that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Welsh.
I have no report.
Ms. Hamburg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, only thing I'll mention is last Thursday, the 14th, I attended Planning Commission, uh, just to hear Lance's first take, um, uh, on our comprehensive plan. Um, lot of information in there. Um, um, one, one thing I'll mention is we have a lot of schools and a lot of non, not for profits, which don't add to our tax base. Um, and then Ms. Paula Downs mentioned point, point eight percent is retail. So, um, it'll be interesting to see, like you mentioned about our parks and rec plan. It's not a plan and we just do every 10 years and throw it on the shelf, uh, to, to collect us. We really need to think about what levers we can pull as a city, um, to, to maybe influence the direction we take over the next 10 years. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. So we'll move on to Mayor's report. So just on September 4th, there's a regional water summit. I think I mentioned this last city council member, uh, meeting, uh, in Newton that's sponsored by REIT. So if you would like to sign up for that, please do. Uh, on August 12th, I attended the monthly WAMPO Transportation Policy Board meeting. And the annual bicycle and pedestrian count is coming up September 10th, 11th and 13th of this year. They are needing volunteers for the 35 to 38 sites in the metro area. So if you would like to do that, contact WAMPO at, uh, their website, www.wampo.org/bicycle-pedestrian for more information. There also is a safe routes to school study just beginning to ramp up. And if you'd like to provide citizen input, uh, go to the website, www.wampo.org backslash SRTS, standing for Safe Routes to Schools. And you'll see the survey open up there and you can answer that survey. Uh, Mays also gave a presentation of economic development. What's going on in Mays? Got lots of great stuff, like all the cities do. Uh, so I won't, won't delve into that much. On August 13th, I attended the utility advisory board meeting. Uh, they reported that the year to date, Bel Air has received 26.6 inches of rain. That's 8.9 inches above average. And Eisenhower Airport has received 28.4 inches of rain, which is 11.5 inches above average. Now, August 14th, I attended the REIT meeting and the theme for this meeting was housing. Uh, the Realtors of South Central Kansas, which is the organization that owns and manages the MLS service in this region. They confirmed what many of us have already observed, that the housing market is softening. Uh, the average days on market is, the metro area is about 2.6 months. And every sales price has dropped to about $278,000. Uh, South Central Economic, uh, South Central Kansas Economic Development District, also known as SCADD, is S-C-K-E-D-D. And they are here in Bel Air, also made a couple of presentations. The one I thought, uh, might be of interest in some, to some Bel Air residents is the Housing Weatherization Program. So Ted Henry, Paula Downs, and I met with SCADD, uh, this afternoon to learn more about this program. If you need help with weather, weatherization of your home, whether it's owned or rented, you can make an application to SCADD. Uh, there are income limitations, but the report I saw, that bar is pretty high. It's meaning a lot of middle income people will qualify and almost anyone on social security, if that is their sole source of income, uh, will qualify. Uh, you can make application on the website at scadd.org or you can contact Paula Downs at our city. And she will get you in touch with the right people. And on August 15th, I attended the K254 Corridor Association Meeting. Uh, the project team, Wilson and Company with GFT, which is formerly known as Transist, uh, provided an overview of their plans for moving forward with the Rock, Webb and Greenwich intersections. Uh, there will be a public interaction for those project, for that project plan. Uh, KDOT also gave a presentation on the Drive to Zero Program. And this is an effort to work towards zero traffic deaths in Kansas. Much of this meeting was focused on the upcoming, upcoming KDOT consult, which is held every other year. Uh, this is discussed at the Steering Committee meeting in August, uh, August 1st. A, a rapid electronic vote was taken and the consensus was that the River Valley Road at Towanda is the next priority after the Rock, Webb and Greenwich, uh, project plan. Uh, so this will then be the focus of this group at the KDOT consult on October 8th. The more folks we can get to, to the consult to encourage this project, the better opportunity we have that KDOT will start looking at for the detailed plan. Uh, it's September 26th, online training is planned in preparation of the consult. And then yesterday we learned City Wichita had on their agenda for today to impose a permanent water restriction of three days per week. The proposal was to include wholesale customers such as Bel Air. While this concept had been discussed and showing up on agenda for adoption was a surprise. I sent Mayor Wu and City, Wichita's city council members an email yesterday stating that this needs to be discussed with the wholesale customers to get consensus on the best way to implement this restriction for wholesale water customers. I attended the Wichita City Council meeting today and provided a similar verbal statement and requested that the city council table the item so that they can have a meaningful, that we can have a meaningful discussion. Unfortunately, the city council passed on a first read of the ordinance four to three after 4:00 PM today. So if officially passed on a second read, this will require we modify our water conservation plan. But we need to hold Gary Jansen to his statement that he, that we only need to provide three days watering. Uh, how we do it and the penalties we impose are up to us. I'll now ask our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a really quick Cora update, Kansas Open Records request. HB 2134, I've discussed this with council before. It updated the statute relating to Cora requests. However, there's new information being provided to municipalities. And that is that the Attorney General's Office has provided additional guidance. Number one, the Attorney General's Office has said that for us to charge a per page fee for copies or digital records are not allowed. Before the change in the law, there was a presumption that a 25 cent per page was reasonable. But again, that is no longer the case due to HB 2134. All Cora fees must be tied to a city's actual cost in fulfilling the records request. Uh, the Attorney General's Office has indicated that because the cost per page is likely far less than 25 cents per page, charging that fee per page is unreasonable. Secondly, before the change in law, some organizations also charged a flat fee for a record request. Uh, the Attorney General's Office has provided guidance to show that flat fees for a record request is no longer allowed either. This is because all fees must be based on the actual costs that were incurred by the city staff. The Attorney General's Office has said that establishing a fee in advance is not permissible because it does not reflect, again, the actual cost of that specific request. City attorneys are now reviewing fee schedules, and I shouldn't say now, since, uh, the, uh, new law came to effect. City attorneys have been reviewing and will continue to review the fee schedules and practices and considering revisions to policies or ordinances, all to ensure that our fees are accurately reflecting the costs of the materials needed to produce the given record to the record requister. Just to let council know, uh, the city of Bel Air, we have two clerks. One that, uh, accepts record requests for police department. And then the other record clerk receives requests for non-police departments. So we have two. We are going to be meeting next week because we are being very proactive to make sure that our ordinance and our policy confirms and is in compliance with the statutes. That's just a brief update for the governing body. Feel free to let me know if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Move on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you reported, you know, I, I read a lot in the, uh, softening of the housing market. And I just wanted to at least give you guys an update. I try to do that every quarter. I don't think I've done it in a while. Um, uh, right now we're sitting around 91 housing units, uh, be, permits being pulled in new construction. If you compare that to 2024, there are about 98. So we're right along the same, same row. Uh, we did have a slightly down Ju-, uh, June, but then came right bouncing back up in July. So really too early to tell with Bel Air. We're still doing a lot of plats and a lot of, we have a lot of virgin ground here. So I, I'm not seeing that yet, but let you know that the data side of me will not let us forget and watch the trends as, as we go through, uh, these next five to 10 years. Uh, second, I'd give you a quick update on projects. Woodlawn PEC submitted plans to KDOT and they're working really well together. Two to four weeks, hoping, uh, for a review process for that. And then we go through the, another process and another process. But we're really hoping to get construction started, uh, by the end of the year. Roar Park can't get done soon enough. It's right now, the schedule's looking like late September. As you know, after Roar Park ditches and, uh, that project's done, we'll come back in, uh, and do the gravel project. Um, that follows and that we worked so hard with the gravel road task force to do. All of our culvert replacement project, early September should be completed. Public Works Facility, uh, early October. 53rd Street sidewalk will bid in September and we're going to hopefully get started ASAP on that. 2026 street maintenance plan for the October workshop, uh, October, November, we usually meet. Uh, there is some, uh, good planning when we have our plan out and get it out, uh, to, to bid. We really capitalize on the scheduling of contractors. Comprehensive plan I included, uh, in an email to everyone, but, uh, check, check your, uh, but you might review that because we're going to take that up in September 2nd. If you have any questions, please let me or Paula Downs know so that we can answer those, uh, before the, before the meeting. The next thing, I've been giving out a lot of these lately. And if you haven't seen these, these are five, 10, 15, 20 year work anniversaries. And it got me thinking. And so I pulled the list, about 50% of our workforce has been here over five years. About 30% has been here over 10 years. I say that because every other manager's report I come, I talk about the software system upgrade and how big it is for the city. It's not possible if we don't have all these employees with this many years of service that can do their, nor, nor their job as well as adjust at the same time. So a big shout out to them. Also, since I started, we brought on some new faces. Um, Paula is doing great work at, uh, planning and zoning, asking a lot of questions why. I don't need to tell you, but Maria's doing an amazing job with all the legal side of things. You've seen it, the differences. I just, I'm really excited about, uh, the future and where our staff is going and wanted to highlight them real quick. Uh, events coming up, uh, park cleanup, August 30th at Alley Park from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, or 10:00 AM. 10:00 PM, that'd be a long cleanup. Uh, National Night Out, September 20th and Fall Festival is October 18th. Thank you, Mayor. If you have any questions, I'm here to stand for them.
I think Alley Park's that dirty, need fourteen hours.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so do you want to move on to items A, uh, 12A and 12B? Because Adam Pope is here and he has a bit of a travel back home. Or are you headed, are you headed back home tonight?
Yeah, yeah. We might do that. We might let Adam go home.
Okay. All right. Okay. So we'll move on to, uh, item 12A. Uh, so this is several infrastructure projects, which we just had the public hearing on. We're ready for permanent financing and ready, and special assessments to those benefiting properties. On August 5th, city council approved the assess, uh, assessment rule and started the formal adoption process as required. Notices were mailed to property owners of record and notice of public hearing was published. Earlier in the meeting, we just had that public hearing and the council may now consider the ordinance to levy the special assessments. If approved, notices will be sent to all affected property owners notifying them of a 15 day prepayment window. So that prepayment window hasn't really started yet. So during the 15 days, property owners will have the opportunity to pay a portion or all the costs without interest. And after the 15 day period closes, any remaining balance will be reported to the county clerk's office to be incorporated in the property tax bill and spread over a period of 20 years. Uh, staff as well of Adam Pope with Capital, Columbia Capital is here to answer questions. So, Mr. Pope, if you'd like to come to the microphone and if they got any questions they can ask you.
I, I have a question about what one of our citizens said. She said she had not received the notice letter. Have we a way to verify that everybody's received that that was supposed to?
Yeah. So Barry and I stepped out into the hallway to speak with them. And it appears like there may be a discrepancy between what was listed on the county's property ownership records and what is, um, who actually owns the properties. The, the letters were sent to JCT Holdings, which I think was the developer. And they were still listed on the county's property tax record as the, as the owner of the property. So I think, uh, Barry and staff are going to work to make sure that all those owners within that development have been properly notified.
I was going to say, do we know how many people are still under that erroneous information?
I think we sound about 20 or 30, um, in that, in that ballpark range. But, uh, speaking with the homeowners, they're going to get in touch with me in the morning and get a homeownership list of that whole neighborhood. list of that whole neighborhood, and we'll just handwrite them out and get them out there to make sure every homeowner gets one.
Are we going to have any issues with compliance with statutes on this issue?
Again, I'm not a lawyer, so that's, we'll, we'll double check with Kevin Cowan tomorrow to make sure. But this had, you know, in the past, I think we've had issues, you know, here and there where, where the letters weren't received or sent to the wrong house. And, and I think as long as we get this second letter delivered correctly and promptly, I think, I think everything should be fine.
It concerns me, it's about a third of the properties that don't have their letter, and I'm, I'm thinking maybe we should table this until the next meeting, until we're sure everybody's been properly notified. If it was one or two people, it wouldn't really make much difference. It would to them personally, but not to the group.
I'm going to see if Kevin's on. I gave him a Zoom link to the meeting. Okay, yeah, he said yes. So let's see what Kevin has to say on this issue.
Can y'all hear me?
We can.
So the, the statute requires that the previous mailing be to the last known addresses of property owners and certainly consulting the county's property records, I, I think would satisfy that legally. That may be different than the councilman is referencing, just sort of, have we legally complied or do we want to, to provide additional opportunity or additional time? You could do that perhaps, Adam, I don't have the calendar in front of me, how that might all play out until the, the next meeting. But I do believe you have legally complied when you pull property records from the county's websites and that to the city is the last known mailing address of property owners. But again, I'll reiterate, that's, that's different than if you all choose as a body to provide additional notice and additional opportunity over the next couple of weeks to, to meet with staff and talk about it. And again, I'm on the road, I don't have the calendar leading up to the bond sale, which some of this is tied to, so I'm not sure how that, that might play out.
It bothers me that we're talking about the legality and not the spirit of the law here. The spirit was to identify, to notify all the property owners, and clearly we didn't hit that very well.
So Councilmember Welch, to your, to your question on, and to echo Kevin, on kind of schedule-wise, where we would stand. So right now, we have a calendar to price the bonds on October 7th. So if we were to delay, Kevin, would it just, would we push everything back? I guess everything would just move back two weeks. So we could still, we could still meet the, because the, the notes are due on December 1 is their maturity date, so we must have the funds in hand to pay those off at that point. If we were to delay another couple of weeks, we could still, we would price that October 21st meeting, and then we could still close, we could close in, in mid-November and have fun. So if the council did wish to, you know, give some extra time, I think we could still meet the.
Does that give any crosshairs with county treasurer trying to get property tax notices out in November?
No, because this isn't impacted by that, because the, 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 these properties wouldn't go onto the property tax until the following year.
Well, they won't go on till next year.
Yeah, because these are, these are, this is, we're going from notes to bonds here, and so there, we just, we just submitted to the, to the county a couple of weeks ago for the bonds we did last year. So it's kind of a, a 12-month roughly delay in between those, or lag.
All right. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And Councilmember Welch, to clarify that, there was 36 letters, but each parcel had two letters. So there's 18 altogether, addressed to that one property owner, the JCT Holdings.
But you're, so you're saying all of those duplexes are owned by one person?
That was.
Each duplex is one person?
It was the owner record on the property tax website.
Do we have any feel for how many of those properties have actually been sold to individuals that, to county record for whatever reason was not up to date, which is just shocking to me that that would be the case?
Sounds like several.
Yeah, again, we were speaking with the two residents, and I don't think they knew for sure, but they seemed to say that, that, that there were several that probably, they thought might not have received. But again, we don't have the exact number at this point.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hamburg.
So just so I understand, we would basically have another public hearing at the September 2nd meeting or?
Yeah, Kevin.
You could, I suppose, I mean, close the public hearing, you could call for another public hearing, mail notices, maybe to everybody. I'm not, I'm not confident based on what I'm hearing about the county's records that, that will get everybody next time as, as well. I don't know how to guard against that unless you go search register of deeds records and, and see if those are accurate or hire a title company to do that. But, but you could have another public hearing. I think you could table the ordinance and maybe less formally provide notice to anybody that you think did not receive notice, have discussions. And really what we'd be doing, I think, is, is pushing the prepayment period out because that always starts after passage of the ordinance. So if this got pushed to the first meeting in September and you wanted to allow a prepayment period after that, I think that is, is how it would, would work. But again, if you wanted to call another hearing, you could. What I'm a little uncertain about is whether we'd want to give the same notice to everybody that has received notice, some of whom showed up, attended the meeting tonight, and that's where it gets a little complicated for me.
Do we know if the same developer sold all those lots or were there multiple developers in there? Because if it's the same developer, he ought to be able to tell us who bought lots from him. And we ought to be able to cross-reference.
I don't know the exact number owned by that specific developer off the top of my head without looking at every letter we send out to that neighborhood. I think that is the primary developer though, for that neighborhood.
Well, but he, he would have also received notices for lots that aren't finished yet, right? So we don't really know, without asking, consulting with him, we wouldn't know, or somebody just driving down the street checking off a list.
Yeah, I think that's one of the things we'd like to ask staff to go find out for us tomorrow and, and let us know what, how many, how many properties did registered deeds not have up to date? And I'm, I mean, that's either a title company error or somebody's, somebody's messing up here, I don't know who, that didn't have the right records. That's, that's, that's not a good thing. It's not our issue. I get it from the legal perspective, but that's not a good thing to have happen, that you have multiple properties that don't have the right properties registration.
Kevin, Kevin, you've been through thousands of these?
Yeah.
I mean, has this ever, because I've been through.
Right.
10.
But, I mean, if, if it's truly 18 properties and there are now 36 owners or something like that, I, I don't think I've seen it to that scale before. I mean, again, things happen, maybe it happens very late in the process where a property changed hands, you know, two or three weeks ago, and the county's website is just not up to date, they haven't done a data update or something like that. But I, I'm wondering if, if maybe we, the governing body could decide that in the earlier hearing, you're going to continue that hearing, the September, is it the 2nd? And I, and we can send notices again, obviously, the city can send notices to everybody again, but maybe what could be done in the next couple of days is determine what, who didn't get the notice? What, is it truly just the 18 lots? And, and then maybe we provide notice to those folks and, and an opportunity to come on September 2nd and talk about it without recreating all of this. That, I guess that's my primary concern. If we send out, you know, 100-plus letters again, whether that will add to the confusion for those that have received the letter, had the opportunity to attend a hearing tonight, or whether we want to focus on, let's continue the hearing, but give additional notice to anybody we determined did not receive the mail notice because of the county information, and, and then maybe have the ordinance for consideration at that time.
I, I'm okay with the continued hearing and just sending the notices to those that may not have received it because of the, of the snafu of the record being incorrect at the county, but we already closed the hearing. We formally closed the hearing. So do we need to reopen the hearing?
Well.
Continue it?
Yeah. I may rely on Maria a little bit. I, I don't think there's anything that would prevent you from determining that you've complied with the statutes, but also that you'd like to have another opportunity for some property owners to come before the governing body. So maybe you, you set another hearing date, or, or as you say, Mayor, maybe you open the hearing that was closed earlier and continue it. I'm, I'm not sure about the Roberts rules of order on that, but I, I am confident the fallback is you've complied with the statutory requirements this evening, and anything else you could do in terms of having another hearing, whether it's continuation or an additional hearing for certain property owners, is, is just your own decision because you feel more comfortable with that. And as was referenced earlier, it's, it's the practicality of it, or the spirit of it more than whether you've complied. So I'll defer maybe to Maria or you all, whether you want to reopen a hearing just tonight for the purposes of continuing it to a later date, or whether you want to consider a separate hearing, but just in addition to what you've done.
I'm going to straddle the fence a little bit. Nobody brought up anything that I think was material in the hearing, so I don't know if we need to reopen that. But I would like to make sure that everybody was notified in time so that they could react appropriately, you know, if they need to get some money together or they already have some money.
That, that's a good thought where, where we close the hearing. There's nothing that requires you to pass the ordinance tonight, but you cannot pass the ordinance until the, the hearing has been closed, which is done. So if you decide, we're going to table the ordinance until September 2nd, and in the meantime, we're going to have additional communications in. And the, the notification that goes out regarding prepayment usually follows the ordinance. I don't know if we want to try to give some intervening communication to property owners that would say, hey, you are expecting a prepayment period that is pegged to tonight's hearing and we changed it, or whether we want to do that informally. But I, I think what I'm hearing is we're really worried about the folks that maybe didn't get any notice at all. And so if we table the ordinance until the 2nd, but notify them, they have an opportunity to come discuss with staff, or, you know, it's not going to be a hearing, but if they want to come and have a public comment at the 2nd, that's all going to precede the ordinance that would then lead into the prepayment period. So maybe it is a good way to straddle the fence.
So here, here's what I want to suggest then. I want to suggest we table this ordinance and, and hold this, bring this back up on the first meeting in September, which I believe is September 2nd. We go and do the research on who real property owners are that did not get a notice, make sure we send them a, a letter apologizing them, to them that they didn't get the original notice. It was done legally, but they were missed and find out. And how, and then we want to know how many of those people there are, because it is entirely possible, and I, I'm just speculating here, that the, and I don't know the gentleman's situation that, who didn't get the notice, but it's entirely possible, he has a contract for deed, he's not going to get that notice because he doesn't, he's not the property owner yet. And I don't know that, okay? And I, nobody here knows that because we've never had that conversation. If he's in that situation, he's not going to get a notice because it wouldn't be him that would get it. He's not, he's not the owner of record. So we need to find those, answer those questions and find out of those properties that this, this developer has, did he sell them? Did he sell them in a process that would have transferred deed? And if he did, then we need, those are the ones we need to send a, a letter to. And that may be just two. It may be 18. I don't know.
Just to be clear, we're focused on the one neighborhood with the one developer.
That's where we have the issue, right?
Yeah. As I say, we sent out 451 letters, so I was like.
Right. No, I don't want you researching all those. No, no. I want, I want to make this, I want to be honest with those folks about what happened. We followed the law. Unfortunately, those, those, their, their deeds haven't been recorded for whatever reason. I don't know, but that's, that's not our issue. And, and, but, and make sure that we get them a proper notice if there was a mistake and get the deed recorded. Okay? Does that sound like a reasonable solution?
Basically, I'm concerned with the one neighborhood statement though versus 451. Why are we just looking at one neighborhood?
That's the only place we have the air.
Do we know that?
No, but we have to assume that that's the case because.
That's, that's my concern. We don't know who we didn't send it to.
So, so this neighborhood is, is the, well, they were duplexes, I guess now they're technically townhomes, is that correct? And so it's a bit of the, you know, most of the other ones were single-family homes. So, you know, it, this was a bit of a, of the 451, this is probably a unique circumstance, this, this set of, of properties.
Were they completed earlier in the cycle so that we think that they're actually up to date?
I'm not sure of that. I'm not sure if these were, some of the parcels that were being lot split.
So that could be a factor right there.
And then a split because their owner didn't get recorded. I don't know.
The developer created a can of worms there with this lot splits. Yes.
Yeah, so that's that, it's that same.
It's that same area.
Last, last week, or last week, last meeting, y'all spoke about it. I think Kevin said, you know, with the lot splits and all of that. So again, this is a bit of a unique.
Okay, I can buy that.
Okay.
I will make a motion to table the ordinance, leaving special assessments, blah, 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 whatever we need to reference here.
You're just tabling it. I don't think you need to read it all. Is that correct?
Item 12A.
12A.
To table item 12A.
Okay.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Welch to table and a second by Ms. Hamburg. Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Just, just one other question, and this also is probably not Bel Air's issue that was caused by Bel Air, but why was, was it just a one-off that the, the one property owner had such a discrepancy on the amount expected versus the amount assessed?
I'm not sure. I mean, again, the, I don't know what they were told by their realtor, so.
But it's not that Bel Air, that our actual costs went up.
No, no. I mean, so, you know, I think, as mentioned earlier, that overall the projects were less, but it depends on the individual project. Some were higher, some were lower in total across all, I don't know how many projects are this, there's 20-something projects, I think. So in total, they, overall it was lower, but there's some cases that some of the projects were a bit higher, some were lower. So it's hard to, and again, don't know what they were told during the, the purchase process.
Nor do we know who told them that.
Correct, yeah. But again, you know, three years ago, when this process started, you know, the, the estimates are given at that point, and then, you know, as you know, over time, construction costs changes, things are, get adjusted. So very often, projects come in higher, sometimes they're lower. It just depends on the individual project. So it's, it's, it's common, common, I guess, across, during the special assessment process that sometimes the, the estimates are lower than what they end up being once we get to the final, final phase.
Okay, and I guess all I'm asking is if it's any information that Bel Air's putting out that changed?
No.
Does that sound like it?
No.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I think there was some impli, it was implied by some of the comments that the city makes money on this situation, and the city makes no money here. These are, and we usually, unless there's extenuating circumstance, we take the low bid. bidder to get all this work done for the infrastructure. So we're not making any money on this. And alls we're doing is, we are actually supporting the bonds that will get paid back. That actually covers the expenses that the developer and all the people working for that developer to get the work done. That's where it goes. It doesn't go to us. So the city's not making any money on that. So I didn't want, I wanted to kind of make sure that wasn't implied, or people didn't think that. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. And to add to that, the other advantage of doing this process is the lower interest rate on the money. A citizen cannot go get that interest rate that the city is available, available to the city because they're tax-free bonds.
Yeah, they wouldn't want to put that on their house loan because it's a little bit higher interest rate at their house loan.
Yeah, the city's passing along your double A minus credit rating, because these are issued as general obligation bonds, and the city enjoys a double A minus credit rating, which is, you know.
Trying to help.
Yeah, it is helpful to the developer and ultimately to the homeowners.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I have a motion on the table to table.
Mr. Mayor, was Councilmember Welch's motion meant to also include learn who may not have received notice and send notice to those individuals? If so, we can include that for the minutes. I just wanted to confirm.
Yes, I just didn't even think about adding that.
So do you want to modify your motion to add that?
I'll modify the motion to table item 12A until such time as we have found out who did not get notified and they have been notified, or September 2nd, whichever comes first.
Ms. Hamburg, do you agree to this, that modification?
Yeah, I'll second. Yep.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Here or none, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries four to zero. And the next item, 12B, is, we need Mr. Pope here for that. So since April, the City Council has several.
Executive session.
Huh? No, we're moving to get Mr. Pope on his way home.
Oh, he's, okay. I didn't realize he was involved in that, was why I was.
Okay. You're not?
I'm not involved in this.
Well, he's got you in the notes that you are. So if that's not the case, then.
I'm just well there.
We're good to go. So, very good.
I guess we can send Barry home.
Yeah. So if we want to go to executive session, we certainly can do that. And what item is that? So this is item 13A, and we are requesting 45 minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to recess into executive session to discuss with legal counsel and receive legal advice related to pending litigation. The discussion will be pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 for legal consultation with Neil Gosh, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Invite the city manager, city engineer, city attorney, and Catherine Chomsky. I assume we're inviting Neil Gosh too by that. The meeting will be for a period of 45 minutes, and the open meeting rules room and city council chambers at 9:15.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Welch, the second by Mr. David. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero, and executive session for 45 minutes.
So Mr. Maria, Maria, not Ria. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session, no binding action was taken, and we're ready to move on to item 12B. So since April, the City Council has held several workshops to discuss the proposed 2026 budget. Council held final discussions on the proposed budget at the August 12 workshop, and this action approves the summary numbers and mail rate to be published and confirms the scheduling of a public hearing. So staff is here to answer questions. So just a note, Central County has already published that we will hold our R and R hearing on September 2 at 7:00 PM. So I've asked staff to move these resolutions, at least setting the time and date of the R and R hearing to an earlier date in the year so that we are not approving something after the fact of some publication, even though that's not the legal publication, it's out there. So, okay. Barry, I think you're here to answer questions?
Is that right?
Answer any questions?
Okay, any questions for Barry?
It references September 2 in the resolution, so that's what we're headed for, right?
Yes.
Okay. I was looking to see if it was anyplace else. I will motion to accept a resolution of the governing body of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, setting the date, time, and place for a public hearing regarding the city's intent to levy a property tax exceeding the revenue neutral rate and authorize mayor to sign.
A second? Motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. David. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Move on to item C. This is contract with SEC Engineering. The developer Sunflower Commerce Park III is ready to move forward with the development and the rest of the addition. This contract provides engineering design services for the water and sanitary sewer, including a lift station, summer storm sewer drainage, and paving for the remaining five industrial lots of the addition. So SEH designed the first phase of improvements for this addition. Construction phase services, including construction observation, administration, and staking, will be provided under a separate contract. And city engineer Anne Stevens? Was here? There she is. Okay, she's here to discuss and answer questions. But before Anne speaks, I'd like to, our city manager, review the process regarding the lack of a developers agreement and what we have in place instead of the normal developers agreement that we would usually see.
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor said, this is a, the first phase was started in 2023, so I, you know, wondering, wondering why we haven't had this discussion before, but I had Paula and I did some research and found out. So Sunflower Commerce Park Edition, located south of 53rd, what you think of when you think of Sunflower Commerce Park? And we do, one more. There you go. They have covenants in a business owners association with Article VII, providing general covenants, restrictions, disclosures, such as things of structures, off-street parking, lot usage, drainage, et cetera, many of which be included in a general development agreement. The final plat for Sunflower Commerce Park Edition contains a PUD agreement language, which expands the covenants, include language found in traditional developers agreement. So when they started, the city owned this piece of land, so that became Sunflower Commerce Park II, and what they did is ruled Sunflower Commerce Park II into the same covenants as Sunflower Commerce Park I. When Michael Lay purchased this property back in 2023, he replatted Lot 2, Block A, Sunflower Commerce Park II addition, lots, Lot 8 through Lot, and eight lots and two reserves. The final plat contained the PUD regulation, regulation text saying, the Sunflower Commerce Park III, a replot of Lot 2, Block A, Sunflower Commerce Park II addition, and its two reserves conforms to the standards and zonings in place of the property from the original PUD plat of Sunflower Commerce Park II. So that's a long way of saying they're part of the Sunflower Commerce Park and the covenants and those sort of things dictate this area as well. We do have letters of credit in Phase 1 and 2 as well. I'm here to stand for any questions. It's a long, long way to get around it, but.
Well, thank you, because I know that was a question I had, and I figured council will have it too. So thank you.
First question I got, it's for talking about a dollar amount, but I don't see a dollar amount anywhere.
Yeah, I haven't found it yet.
I can't find it in that design agreement, and it's not on our agenda, so I don't know what we're.
245 is in that.
Yeah, page 5 of the decree.
Right at the top of the, in that first paragraph, paragraph A.
You said page 5?
Yes, it's page 166 of your packet.
I don't do that.
Page 5 of the contract.
Page 5 of the contract.
There it is.
Paragraph A down there on page 5. Greg was right, of the document itself, not of the packet. $245,500. That's what we're talking about.
It's also down on page 12.
Okay, you read closer than I did.
Yeah, I just was looking for the same question, trying to answer the same.
Oh, you got there first then, okay.
He reads fast.
No, it's actually in bold on page 12. I might have found that eventually.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so we got the price. That's good.
Yeah, that was my big question.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Motion to accept the contract SEH for engineering services related to construction on Sunflower Commerce Park Phase 2, and the amount not to exceed $245,500, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'll take, I got a motion by Mr. David, a second by Mr. Schmidt. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. There was a second change screen, there we are. Okay, the next item, D. This is amendment to professional services, engineering services agreement with Garber. When Garber originally awarded the contract for 45th Street, Woodlot to Oliver Reconstruction, the replacement of the culvert structure at Oliver just south of 45th was included in the design and was intended to be replaced with the 45th Street reconstruction project. However, after the award of the design contract, the city was awarded a grant from KDOT to remove and replace the structure, and worked with Garber to remove the culvert replacement from the overall 45th Street project, and developed a completely separate set of plans that could be executed outside of the large project. While the majority of the design work was already covered under Garber's contract for 45th Street, there was additional work involved in separating the culvert replacement project to a separate set of plans and bidding services for such. There was also a small amount of design work necessary for interim grading to ensure proper flow through the new culvert in advance of the overall 45th Street project. This supplemental agreement covers the additional work necessary to separate the plans, grading, design, and bidding services. City engineer Anne Stevens is here to discuss and answer questions with regard to this. On note on this is with regard to this. On note on this issue, we are being asked to approve an engineering cost that were over and above the original contract after the fact of this cost being incurred. In review of this situation, it's clear to me that we should have been presented to the city council back in the two projects were made separate projects. I have asked our city manager to help make sure that we are not getting the cart before the horse on future similar issues. So, Ms. Stevens.
So, this, kind of in light of the mayor's point, Mr. Lee did acknowledge that this was a little bit behind the eight ball. He also did send an original letter agreement to us in May of this year, working through the legal process it's taken up to now to get this before you. So, there's been a lot of back and forth in reviewing contracts to make sure that there is a contract that our legal department is comfortable signing. It's, it's been a long, drawn-out thing. The, the piece that was originally sent was not in conformance with the original contract documents or the amendment procedures. So, there was a little bit of that.
And I think, I think that's kind of, it's kind of twofold, and Anne and I can put our hand up. Lee, Ken sent this letter in May, and then sent to both Anne and I. And what happens when something like that happens, Anne thinks it's going down one road, I think it's going down the other. So, that was kind of the major mistake there. And once, once we found out, oh, no, it hasn't been on, then we went to correct it. The, the legal side really took, you know, a few weeks, but the, the big, the big miss was the miscommunication between Anne and I. So, we'll, we'll state that, and I'll let that happen again.
But this is mainly separating those plans and getting the extra bidding documents together to get this out to public for bids.
Well, I understand the, the reason for it. Just, like I said, it just should have been done earlier than later.
Correct. And that was an oversight on Ken's part as well. He, he fully owns that one.
Okay.
I want to make a comment here. It's not really pertinent to this contract, but my wife and I drove by today, and she saw the culvert that they took out, and she says, "All those people complaining about Oliver torn up should be thankful they're not falling in because we're getting that replaced now before it got any worse."
Yeah.
In respect to your comment, the culverts were in such bad condition that when they would have gone through and load rated it this year, KDOT would have closed that section for us. Because they know that we are in the process of replacing the culvert, they have decided not to load rate it, and therefore it did not get closed. So, it would have been closed one way or the other. It's, it's just the timing and the duration that has taken quite a while.
I'd rather we close it for this reason.
Agreed.
I don't, I don't want us having collapsing bridges, and I don't want us closing roads because of the threat of collapsing bridge.
And, and the worst part of the culvert is yet to come out.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Amber.
I also wanted to point out, I think I'm not finding it at the moment, but this $18,896 is still a, a good deal for the work they did. They didn't, they could have charged more, is my understanding.
Yes, ma'am. When I had originally received Ken's email, I asked him, I said, "Are you sure this is enough?" Because I would have expected more along the lines of 30, 30 to 36,000. So, yeah, I feel that it was a fair cost for what's been done.
And this is just for the additional work that had to be done? I mean, some of that design work was already done because it's part of the, part of the other road project.
That is correct.
Okay. So, this is going to tie into the roundabout with no issues, right? So, they're not going to undo what they're doing now when they do this roundabout work?
That is correct. There is, there may be a slight bit of rework on the eastern edge because they have to make sure that that is safe in the interim being. And it would just be some grading and maybe bringing the head wall out. There's not going to be any rework done with the box that is currently under the road, but we will be.
Okay, I just want to make sure those two don't in any way.
Right.
Yeah, no, we're.
We want to be optimized here.
Exactly. And since Garver is doing the larger project as well as the smaller, they're trying to limit the amount of rework that is done.
And that was one of the theories of why we included that as part of the.
Right.
The 45th Street project, because we knew that that was in bad shape. We just didn't know it was ready to be condemned.
Right, exactly. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns?
I motion to accept amendment number one to the agreement for professional engineering services between the city of Bel Air, Kansas and Garver LLC for professional engineering services for RCB replacement project at 45th and Oliver and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. Schmidt. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Move on to item E. This is a change order to Donlinger and Sons Construction Contract, same project. So, following the bid of, bidding of the project, utility lines were discovered in the vicinity of the project. These lines needed to be support, needed to be supported during removal and replacement of the bridge structure. And this change order is to pay for the additional work necessary to support the utilities during the execution of this project. So, engineers, Anne Stevens is here to discuss, answer questions. And just as another, when I first saw this on the agenda, I asked if the project was going to be held up due to this change order, and I was confirmed that the project is moving forward, and it does not hold up the project. So, Ms. Stevens.
So, when this was, since this was part of a larger project initially, Garver had sent the utility plan, or the, the plans out to the utilities to ask them to come up with any conflicts that would be needed or necessary that we needed to work around to make the companies, or to make the bidding contractors aware of. There was very little coordination and communication back from the utilities on that matter. When we ripped up the 53rd and Rock Road culvert that Donlinger also won, there was some communication with utilities, and they got wind of the 45th and Oliver project that they had apparently forgotten about or didn't realize it was bidding out. So, there was some communication that did not happen. We got with the utility companies as soon as we could. Once we heard about what was going on and how they weren't aware of the project, which technically they were, they just didn't remember. There's multiple utilities down there that, while not directly impacting the box, they do go over the box, and there's a very significant separation, probably at least five feet. So, nothing is damaged, but it did require the installation of a steel beam in order, that spans the excavation on both sides in order to support the utilities. And it's, it's currently out there right now. It's something that we needed to do anyway, and the change order is being brought forward.
Well, so that, that comment concerns me. And not so much that we don't need to do this. I agree with that. But this seems to be a recurring theme we're having with utilities. We had it on 53rd Street. Their gas line was 10 feet off. We had it in Aurora Park. They didn't even note that, where the utility lines were and take care of them. And then we discovered after they thought they had it fixed, that they still didn't have it fixed. They had more lines in place. I don't know if that's the utilities thing, now we got this one. I don't know if that's the utilities not paying attention to us, or we're not being vocal enough with them about it. But I think we need to have a sit-down talk with these particular utilities to say, "Look, guys, you gotta, you gotta work with us on these projects. You can't wait till after the fact like this and say, 'Oh, well, we forgot, so here's an additional cost.'" We, we, we can't run our budgets in our cities that way. No business can do that either. So, we, we, I'm just, it's a little bit outside of the scope of this particular issue, but I just wanted to say, we need to start holding our feet to the fire on this stuff. It's, this is getting to be too much of a recurring theme. Once in a while, I'd say, "Okay, this is three times in the last year."
We'll definitely, I'll sit down with Ted, and we'll talk about it tomorrow morning, and we'll get a game plan on figuring out how to address this. Because I agree, this is happening much more often than it should. The Aurora Park issue that you had mentioned, we have been told multiple, multiple times by the utilities that they are clear.
Yes.
And then it comes back and turns out that it's not true.
I almost want to say, "Just keep on doing the project. If it tears up the utilities, it's, it's on them," right?
Right.
That's my question.
But that's kind of mean to the, to the citizens there, because now they don't have whatever that utility is.
And that's.
Available to them. So, that's not cool. Yeah.
Do we have a release of liability, basically, like when you call 811 and they flag it? And if you dig where it's not flagged, you're okay? Even if you cut the line, they have to fix it themselves?
It's, when I was talking to Kansas Paving, the contractor onsite in Aurora Park, they mentioned that, because we, you know, kind of talked about that a little bit, and they said, "Were the utility companies still bill us for whatever utilities we hit, and it happens, and it does come back to the citizens?" You know, it doesn't matter. The citizens are still disrupted. If you, if they say we're clear and we hit it, you know, they're, the citizens are still out their cable or their Wi-Fi, or whatever, you know, whatever utility it is. And so, it's, it's that huge struggle back and forth, and we're struggling to get the utilities to listen and understand.
Can, can we look into that? If there's any kind of Kansas statutes or anything that put this back to the utilities for them not doing their jobs?
Okay. And I don't want to spend any more time on that, that subject right now, and stay with the.
I, I understand that, and I understand we got to be careful of the citizens that we're not screwing their lives up, but it, it is very annoying.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I agree with all, all that utility discussion that's been highlighted in Aurora Park. I had a question about the pricing for putting up a steel beam and holding it up, not in construction, but does almost $15,000 seem like a lot to you, or does that seem reasonable for what is having to be maintained over three weeks?
I personally don't have the experience to be able to provide an opinion on that. I'm leaning on Garver, and they, they weren't terribly concerned. They thought it may be a little bit high, but they understand that it needs to get done. And this was kind of an after the fact where Donlinger had to go out and source this beam to get it in and bring it in.
So, what's the span of this beam like? It's like 30 to 50 feet, isn't it? Something like that?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I'd say 40 to 50. It's an I-beam.
It's probably appropriate.
It's very, it's, it's a very substantial piece of steel out there. And then you have to crawl out on it to wrap the, the utilities, the pipelines to the beam and make sure it's secured, and then continually maintenance-ing it and making sure that it's staying secure.
So, are the utilities taking care of that, or the contractor?
I believe it's the contractor under utilities observation. I don't believe that the utilities actually came out and strapped their utilities to the beam.
Yeah, I saw the beam. I was wondering what that was there for.
So, what are the utilities that we're working with? Do you know? It's all right. If you don't know, don't.
Yeah, Cox is one. There's an orange pipe. There's, I think, a black pipe.
Okay, so there's more than one.
There, there's, there's two or three.
Okay, all right, very good. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, I'll take, consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
I make a motion to accept change order number one to the contract with Donlinger and Sons Construction for the 45th and Oliver Bridge Project in the amount not to exceed $14,828 and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mr. David, a second by Mr. Schmidt. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm gonna oppose it just on principle.
Okay, so that motion carries one to three, or three to one. I'm sorry, I said it wrong. I wrote it right, but said it wrong. Moving on to item F. This is a change order two to the contract for paving improvements to Chapel Landing. So, during the grading operations, it was discovered that two existing inlets needed to be adjusted to meet the design grades. The note instructing the contractor of the inlet adjustment was inadvertently left off of the plans and bidding documents. This change order is necessary to raise the inlets to the heights of the paving grade. Leave Garver. I don't see Mr. Gar, Mr. Lee with Garver. I don't see him here to answer questions, so I guess you're going to cover for him.
No, I was kind of hoping that he, he told me he was going to be here, so I'm not quite sure. You must have gotten delayed somehow. Exactly. So, as the mayor said, there's, they're connecting on to some existing pavement, and the inlets were installed with Chapel Landing Fourth, a previous project, to make sure that we can take care of the drainage. Those inlets were lower because they were originally planned to have view outs, I believe, a different style of house. And then the developer came through and changed his mind and wanted slab-on-grade homes. So, the entire site got regraded and lifted to make sure that the dirt balanced throughout the site. You didn't have a whole lot of import dirt or have a whole lot of excess dirt that you needed to take off the site, which is fairly typical. But during that regrading process, they missed putting the note on the plans that said, "Adjust inlets to grade." This is something that would have needed to be on the plans. It would have needed to be done initially. Anyway, it would have originally been bid out. The contractor actually reduced their price for us upon request. It was originally, I think, like $14,000, closer to 15, and they reduced it to the $12,500 you see today. I was onsite today for a walk-through, and they're probably a foot and a half, two feet low. So, the contractor has not started on this work and is waiting for the change order to, to be passed. The, one thing of note is the south inlet is set a little bit further back from the road, and so it's kind of like you see when you go down Rock Road to the south, you see all these inlets that are sitting way off. It's not going to be anywhere nearly that drastic, but there's going to have to pour a little bit of a flume to get it into the actual inlet, so it won't be your typical curb inlet that you see that we typically pour.
Yeah, right in line.
Yeah, so I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. The inlet to the north is right in line, and it should be fine. I did ask, since the sidewalk is poured on the north side, I asked them to tip the inlet just a little bit so it's kind of more flush with the ground, and there's no kind of funky grading that goes on that homeowners would eventually need to take care of.
And this is being charged to the development, not to the city at large?
That is correct.
Just go out with the bonds and all that.
That is correct. It will eventually appear. Yep, eventually appear on the special assessments.
So, I assume the engineer did not charge for the rework because they overlooked it in the first place?
That is correct.
Okay. All right.
When I did see those, and I noticed they were kind of way down there, when I drove through there, this is a different point, but I'm sure you've probably covered it when you're doing your review. But on the north section, there's a cul-de-sac, and it has a very small grate for this whole run of road. And I thought, I don't know who's going to have the house right behind that, but it doesn't look like there's much room for water to go into that little grate for the amount of run. So, I hope it was designed right. I saw the other ends. There was culverts on both sides of the road. Most of the places all looked, they had plenty of places for the water to go. But on this one cul-de-sac, which had a fairly long run of maybe 100 yards, and it all goes to this little grate that's not even, it's like where, you know, there's a little bump. They just have the very small curb. There's this little bitty grate. I think they're going to get water behind that. But anyway, you might want to look at that. I'm assuming the design was done correctly. I'm just hoping it wasn't supposed to be twice as wide, and they didn't do it right. Just because we just had some people here saying that they seem to have a little more water than they think's appropriate in some of these areas. So, I don't know if we're, or if somebody's designing it a little bit under what's needed for water. But anyway, I just thought you might want to look at it. It's the cul-de-sac on the north side. It just seems understated for what may be needed. But, I mean, obviously the design guys know what they're doing. I just want to make sure it wasn't a, a miss. That's all. Thank you.
And that is in the Chapel Landing area?
Yes, it is. Yep, on the very north piece. It's a north cul-de-sac.
Is that the one that was built several years ago, or is that?
Oh, no, this is brand new. It's all brand new.
Okay, gotcha.
All brand new.
That just helps me locate it. That just helps me locate it.
Yes.
Okay. And thank you for that input. Are we going, are we ready to make a motion on this issue?
Very old. Okay.
I will motion to approve change order number two to the contract for paving improvements to Serv Chapel Landing, fifth, phase one, in the amount not to exceed twelve thousand, five hundred and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. Schmidt. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Item G. So, as members of the League of Kansas Municipalities, Bel Air is entitled to three voting delegates at the annual business meeting during, held during the annual conference. So, Bel Air is also entitled to elect three alternate, alternate delegates. And this year, the conference will be held in Overland Park from October ninth through eleventh. The business meeting convention of voting delegates will be held at noon on Saturday, October eleventh. So, city council members, Hamburg, Schmidt, city attorney Maria Schrock, and myself are signed up to attend. I understand council member Dean is still thinking about attending. So, I'm questioning whether we could actually put him on there as an alternate? Is that appropriate or?
He's going to be in the area. So, I, I'm, if knowing council member Dean, he'll probably be there. I think it's safer to say than not.
Okay. So, we could make him an alternate and then if he does show up, no harm done and as long as we.
I like reviewed many alternates in the past. So, we can try.
Have we ever used them? I don't know. It's, the main thing is if somebody gets sick or something, then you got to have somebody to fill in, right? That's what it's all about. So.
So, who are the three we're thinking about for delegates yourself?
My recommendation would be council member Hamburg and Schmidt and myself. And not to slight Maria. She, she's a very good woman, very capable.
Okay. I make a motion to elect Jim Benaz, Emily Hamburg. I did it. I'm sorry. I did it. Just roll right out. Jim Benaz, Emily Hamburg, and Tom Smith as Bel Air Voting Delegates to the League of Kansas Municipalities. See, I can't even say that. Municipalities Annual Business Meeting and Convention of Voting Delegates on Saturday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-five. If I can get it out, you'll second it.
I'll second it. Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. David. Notice the two people that are not going to be there.
That was generous of you, John.
No conflict of interest there.
So, any other questions or discussion? If there is none, I assume you are willing to do this.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. So, if there are no questions or discussions, I'll, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That motion carries four to zero. And now we talk about alternates. So, the alternates I'm suggesting would be Maria Schrock and Mr. Dean.
Got anybody else?
I don't.
We can have three, it looks like.
We can have three if we have three, but I don't know that we have a third person in the area.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to elect Maria Schrock and council member Tyler Dean as Bel Air Alternate Voting Delegates to the League of Kansas Municipalities Annual Business Meeting and Convention of Voting Delegates on Saturday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs., a motion by Ms. Hamburg and a second by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. We already held our executive session, ready to move on to discussion of future issues. Do we have anything we wish to discuss?
Mayor Benaz.
Even though it's almost ten o'clock.
I know. I'll be quick. I just want to be perfectly clear. On item D with engineering for Forty-Fifth and Oliver, the reason it was delayed to get on the agenda was the administration's fault. I, I know Ken Lee submitted a letter that needed some work, but that, that's on the administration's side and we're cleaning that up, already working on it. So, that won't happen again. I just want to be clear because I know, I know there's some stuff about legals being said and that's not exactly accurate. It'd be the admin side was the delay. Just want to make sure.
Well, I just want to make sure that we're, we're working on getting those issues cleaned up because we can't have that kind of thing going on. No way, no way to run an organization and you're well aware of it. So, I won't be better worse. Okay?
And, and not to further delay, but a lot of these change orders are just over ten thousand dollars. And I know council member Welch has been thinking about that. So, we'll look at that when we reopen the financial policies of the city sometime type in the future, what type of limit we want to set.
He thinks it should be five.
I'm thinking with inflation, it ought to be a little higher.
Five years ago, these might all have been under ten.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Any other issues, discussion of future issues? Not, we can move on to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn. Second.
I motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. David. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Too bad. We're going to leave. We're, the passes four to zero.
Sold.
Four to zero. I'll see everybody in two weeks.